Order, Waverly City Council for September twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
The move.
There is second.
Second?
Motion second in council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, that becomes our evening agenda. We welcome back Matthew Stewart as our guest consul person for September, who is now a veteran. Last, last meeting of the month. Any leading comments, Matthew?
Um, you know, last week I kinda got in on the Bremer reconstruction and saw kind of a motion or a motion for a little different agenda than what we had on the agenda. And it's good to see everybody working together and how we all came together to make a decision to move forward and do something better for the community, get a better road and leave some open-ended there-ness if we need to make changes in the future that we can make changes and keep moving forward. It's good to see.
Thank you for the comments. Yeah, I think a lot of us would put an echo ditto. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Matthew. This time I'll entertain any public comments and any items not on tonight's agenda. Study session. Item number one is an update from our municipal housing commission. Rebecca, I think, is going to give that. Um, yeah, this, for the public, this is a very important commission to making Waverly, who Waverly is, so with some anticipation, we look forward to your update.
Well, I'm here by myself. None of my couns-, or my commission people are here, but I see some new faces that I haven't seen before and some of you I do recognize. I'm Rebecca Los, I'm the executive director of Waverly Lower End Housing. We have a hundred apartments that we rent to people who are sixty-two or older because that's the government's decision that you're elderly when you hit sixty-two and which insults some of us, but, you know. And then we also take the people that are on social security disability. If we don't have an apartment for, if we don't have an elderly person needing an apartment, we will take someone who's on social security disability and stuff. Our main goal, which we've continued to do for forty-six years now, is to provide a decent, safe and sanitary housing for all our residents. We have a hundred apartments between the two facilities, a three-story building with fifty-four and six one-story buildings with forty-six apartments in them. We're always constantly trying to maintain our properties. That's our main thing. That's what we do. The buildings, the one-story buildings are forty-six years old, so there's always some sort of maintenance that needs to be done there. The three-story building is, uh, it was opened in nineteen eighty, so it's thirty-six years old. So, um, over the years, we just continue to put in new windows, put in roofs, put in new air conditioning, showers, whatever needs to be. Uh, if you ever drive by our facilities, you probably wouldn't think that they're as old as they are. This last year, we just really haven't done anything but basically maintain the properties. Uh, Waverly Utilities was gracious enough to give us their old substation building that's right behind us. So, we've been able to, with the addition of a garage door and electricity and everything, we now use it to store our inventory and also some of our equipment. It's freed up one of our efficiency apartments, so we can combine two efficiencies into a large, uh, one-bedroom apartment that we reserve for couples. So, we always have a demand for that. The other big thing we've got going on right now is, um, what we call the LZ Phoenix House, which is the big white house just behind our facility, which is used as a veteran's, um, transitional housing. We bought that in two thousand and fourteen, I think, September of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, Rally Point, I'm part of the board of, uh, Rally Point, and, uh, we've seen many veterans come in and out, um, during the flooding this, uh, last week or so. We did open the home for, uh, people that were without a place to go, and we did have a family that took, um, uh, advantage of that. I believe we might have another one coming in tonight. We've had, um, one that's moving into our guest room for a week or so. They're also, we keep a guest room for people who visit the families and everything, so. You know, our big push right now, and we've been working with Bill to try to figure out, we intend to tear that building down and build additional apartments. We're in the process of figuring out who we're going to serve with those apartments. HUD has recently come through with a ruling that we cannot accept anyone in our apartments that don't need, um, subsidy. So, we really shouldn't have anybody living in our apartments at top rent. We have quite a few, actually, that are at top rent, more so in the Waverly homes because, in the one-story buildings, because we have a lot of couples. And even a couple both on social security puts them in the realm of our top rent, which top rent of the Waverly homes is a hundred and sixty-two dollars a month. In the Manor, it's a hundred and, it just changed, a hundred and, five-hundred and sixty-three. Did I say a hundred and, five-hundred and sixty-three and four-hundred and sixty-two? So, for the Waverly homes. So, and that rent covers their gas, their water and their electricity. So, the only out-of, out-of-pocket they have is their telephone and their, um, cable, which right now we offer for ten dollars a month. We haven't worked out, uh, working with, uh, Waverly Utilities to get, right now, we're still with MediaCom, but we will be talking with Waverly Utilities to try to get on their program. But, we, we at the homes and everything wonder about that because elderly people don't like change and they would have to all learn all-new channel numbers and change their TVs and it might be more hassle than it's worth, but we'll, we'll have to see. So, does anybody have any questions that I can answer? We just, we just keep doing our job. We kinda fly under the radar. We always have a waiting list, so we generally don't advertise. So, we just, you know, keep doing what we're doing.
How, how, how big a waiting list do we have? I, i, if we had a hundred and twenty-five apartments, could you fill them?
Um, probably. The Manor's waiting list is probably six people. The Waverly homes, which are the one-story buildings, is larger because we have a lot of people under the age of sixty-two, the handicapped disabled on that list. And we were built for elderly, so we take those people first. And then, then we work our way down through the handicapped disabled. So, um, one of the things we've considered with this possible new building that we're, we're going to build is it would open up some of the one-story buildings for those people. So, it's kind of a give and take, 'cause, you know, we try, we're gonna try to work with various organizations here in town to figure out who we need to serve.
Would your new building also support veterans, or how would you?
Probably not. Probably not. The, um, Rally Point, who oversees the LLZ, are looking to, uh, start a building fund. Um, you know, there's been some talk about moving the old building. You know, it's a great old house, you know, it'd be heavy as heck to move, but, um, you know, be free to them. So, the only, 'cause we only, they pay their own utilities, other than that, there, there's no expense for them to be there. So, um, the veterans are always on our mind, 'cause, um, I, you know, I've associated with many of them, so we, and we're not gonna kick them out without notice and stuff. We'll continue to do what we do.
It just seemed to be a niche that there was a need for, and it was great to see an organization step up, so.
Yeah. It's, it's been very fulfilling. It's, um, sometimes we don't have anybody in there, sometimes they're only in there for a couple of days, and we've had some that have been in there for a couple of months, so. We, we never actually know because it's very private. We don't, we don't ask those questions. Sometimes you just see an odd car sitting there, so you know there's somebody there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Important part of Waverly. Study session number two is an update on the public library by its commission. I think Diana Blake will make the presentation. I'd like to ask the board to, uh, join her.
I think they're going to back me up in case I, in case I haven't, in case I wander off task or have an outburst of enthusiasm, which I have been known to have. And you all have a handout here that you can follow along if you want.
Before you start, could you introduce the board people that you have here?
I gotta remember who they are, don't I?
For our TV audience.
Okay.
Pick up the mic, yeah, you can just pick it up.
Elaine Main and-
Jordan Shank.
Jordan Shank and Linda Podasky and our director, Sarah Meyer Ryerson, and I am Diana Blake, um, vice president. Deanna McQ would have been here, but I think she's, uh, involved with people at work. So, what I wanted to say was, our library is more about just patrons reading newspapers in the Dillon alcove. It's more than just checking out books, and it's more than just statistics about usage per hour and how much material we check out. Tonight, I'd like to just give you a review of our core services that are used by all ages in the community. So, as, you can thumb through the handout, but I wanna talk about some of the programs we have at the library. And these are part of the quality of life in Waverly. We have an early literacy program, and under that, we have the Storytime program for babies and preschoolers, and this meets for, there's four programs per week at the library. And then, we actually go out into the preschools and the home daycares with staff traveling around the community. There are fifty-four traveling Storytime programs every month to the preschools and the twelve in-home daycare. And one of the things that we've always talked about, ever since I've been on the library board, which has been longer than some of you are alive, I think, was that, yes, the, we all know who comes into the library and who the library serves, but how do we get people to use library services that may not be aware of what's there or that we don't know about? So, we've always tried to reach out from the library rather than just standing behind our brick building. And that's what a lot of these core service programs are doing. This summer, we had an amazing summer reading program for the kids. And it not only keeps their reading skills up over the summer, but it brings all kinds of interesting programs in to the library, and the place is packed. Sometimes there's not room for another fanny sitting on the floor because the kids are packed in so tightly. Uh, we do school class visits, and if you've ever been in the library during a school class visit, you'll see kids all over the library with teacher supervision, of course, but the library is an active place, not one where you're quiet all the time, but where kids can not only use the books, but use all the resources. And our librarians are fabulous resource people. We have forty-one class visits per month during the library. Our location is fortuitous because kids can walk from West Cedar, walk from the middle school, and God forbid, high school kids would walk, but they could, and actually come to the library and use whatever we've got. We have teen programming, and I think our teen programming is often the envy of many libraries. Teenagers actually come to our library. We have a teen area, and we're able to re, sort of repurpose that southwest corner of the library with some booths that the kids seem to like, and we can keep the teenagers sort of in one supervised spot, but they like it. They like to come there, and certainly we would rather see them there than on the streets during the early outs. Our library tries to have programs for adults, and we've got a photography group. We have many do-it-yourself programs. Uh, we've had author events and monthly discussion groups. I know I personally go to the Mysteries and Munchies once a month, but there are all sorts of discussion groups for adults to let people engage in visiting about what they're reading. Uh, we actually have an adult summer reading program called Exercise Your Mind. So, if adults aren't willing to exercise their legs, or they could exercise their legs and get to the library to exercise their mind, it keeps people alive. We have lots of computers and internet access for the public. And surprisingly, we think everybody in the community has their own computer, their own internet access, but many people do not. And so, the library is there for that usage plus computer help. And I will be the first to say that I am taking advantage of that myself personally, having purchased a new computer in, uh, with Waverly Utilities, connection in the future in mind, and I'm not particularly computer savvy, therefore, when I have a question and I want help, the library's there. Our collection is very varied. We've got lots of reading material, and we try to provide the resources that people want. And in this day and age, that can be all kinds of resources. We have documentaries from the PBS series that people like to, to go back and, and follow, like watching all the Downton Abbey series again. We've got downloadable books and ebooks. We have large print books. Some of us are very happy for that. We have children's picture books. We have the Wall Street Journal. We do the Consumers Reports online. We have a lot of magazines online. And one of our projects right now is the continued digitization of the local newspapers, the Waverly newspapers and the Waverly historic photos. We're always doing something that somebody in the community wants, and it's amazing when you talk to people what they really want and why they come into the library. It's an active place. If you want statistics, we've got them, but if you wanna see community in action, come to the library and visit with people who are there using our resources. Questions?
How many visits a year? Are we still in that a hundred and fifty thousand category, or is that too high, or?
Yeah, we're in the process of, um, crunching our numbers for fifteen, sixteen now, but, as far as I can tell, we're still in that fifty to fifty-five people per hour for every hour that we're open. That's an average over, over every hour we're open.
Almost makes you smile. You need a new door soon.
One thing that might make you smile, and I think the community smiles when they see it as our library gardens. And there are times of the year where they are just absolutely beautiful, and our water feature, which outlived its life, was leaking and sort of fell apart. We decided that, yes, we needed a water feature. There was a variety of discussions, should we, shouldn't we? And we decided to replace it, and the new water feature was funded all by private contributions. And so, it's much nicer than it was, and the gardens are for everybody in town, and now we have a water feature we can be proud of.
Questions?
I'd just like to put a plug in for the traveling, uh, portion of your outreach. Uh, my wife does in-home childcare, and, uh, she only has to mention the individual's name that's going to be coming with a new set of books, and the kids go crazy for that day. And, uh, occasionally, I'll get to be, uh, daycare daddy to, when she has an appointment or something, and, uh, they'll go right to the sack, and they wanna sit on laps and read those books. It's just amazing to see two- and three-year-olds get that encouraged in reading and, uh, as interested as they are, and a lot of that comes from your program and your outreach, so thank you.
I have a comment and a question. The comment is, I had to give up my seat on the library board when I was elected to city council, and I really miss the library board. What a great bunch of people. I really appreciate what you're doing, and I think, uh, I really like your hyphenated last name, Director. I think she knows what's going on in the world, especially at the library. My question is, where did you find this wonderful photograph of the old Methodist church?
Historic photographs, there, there's a huge collection, collection of historic photographs there in the, the library, and, um, people use those all the time. And now that they're digitized, they can be online. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's gonna be a slower digitization process than the newspapers. We're gonna be doing those and cataloging those ourselves. Um, I think that particular photo came in with a group that we received. A lot of times, it's individual donors. They'll bring in a group. So, in two thousand and ten, I think we received some from an individual, and then our, our job is then to catalog them and put them in. But that is an interesting photo, showing an important moment in time there. And just for, um, those who may not know around the table, that, that original Methodist church was located where the fairway parking lot is right now, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if, appreciate you bringing that up, Mike, about the photos. I was, I apologize, I don't get to as many board meetings as I'd like my day job, it gets in the way of that. But, when I was there, you talked about all the processes and equipment and things that you were doing to, um, basically make these photos available and all the photos that you were getting. Wonder is it, would you wanna talk more about that? Is that something that, I just thought it was, you know, and maybe I'm just biased, I, I really like old photos like this and the history and stuff, and to know that it's actually available and I can go search that at the library was fascinating to me, so.
Yeah, for the, for our photos right now, um, we do have notebooks that have copies of the originals that are, um, organized kind of by topic. There's, there's actually a whole notebook just on flood photos from over the many years in Waverly. Um, there are city services, celebrations, Bremer County Fair, all kinds of different categories like that. And if you find one that you're interested in, um, the librarian can pull the original, and we can digitize it on the spot and send you home with it, you know, on a flash drive or email it to you. So, that's, that's possible right now. In the future, they, you'll be able to search those, um, yourself, online, and that'll be, that'll be even more searchable, so that will be nice. But, yeah, a lot of people probably don't realize that that collection exists.
And any-
Takes a lot of work on your part to do. That's what it was amazing me, is it takes a lot of work to do that.
Any needs that council needs to know about?
Well, um, our budget and finance committee has a meeting set in about a week where we're gonna talk about, um, budgetary needs for next year. So, that'll be in discussion. I think, you know, one thing we're just continuing to talk about right now is, um, how we can continue to use our, our staff as efficiently as possible so that we can continue, um, keep up with the demands for the outreach that we have, that, um, because those programs are growing. We're, um, in fact, I think the, the outreach to home daycare providers has doubled in the last, within the last year or two. We went, we've gone from six to twelve and added a few preschools in there as well, which is absolutely wonderful. We need, um, some more staff flexibility to, to make that happen. So, we're just kind of rearranging. We'd like to, um, we'd like to be able to provide even more outreach to, um, homebound, um, and older citizens who may not be able to get to the- who may not be able to get to the library as they like. We do some of that now, but that would be another area we'd like to expand, so, well, maybe we'll have some more specific information in another month or two.
I just want to say thanks, too, as a former liaison from the council. I did get to know most of you on the, on the, on the board, and Sarah, of course, as a director and some of her staff. I think you do a phenomenal job. I mean, I'm saying that as, as a liaison experience and as a citizen of, of Waverly. I'm amazed at the dedication of the board and the leadership from Sarah, and the work ethic and, and vision of, and creativity of, of the staff all combined. I think it's a great asset to the community. You're fiscally responsible always, and yet, you're creative without adding tons to the budget, so I really appreciate that.
On behalf of the board, I will say thank you for those comments. It is a good board, and it is a good board because we know the people of Waverly appreciate what we do.
Don't want to take this in the wrong direction here, because it's been pretty positive here, but I was approached by a couple of people in the community that heard a rumor that you were asked by the council to look at cutting fifty thousand dollars from your budget. Is that true, or what would that mean to your budget, those type of things?
Yeah. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that, hadn't heard that directly. If it, an amount of that size, I think there's really only, the only answer for something like that would, it would have to come from personnel. As a, you know, a service organization like the entire city is, but, you know, two-thirds or more of our budget is personnel costs, and there would, there would either have to be programs that we didn't do, or hours that we weren't open. There'd have to be some way to cut back on people, so.
Hoping the rumor was not grounded in any actual fact or not. Appreciate that.
At least it didn't reach you, so thank you. Any last comments for Diana and the, or Sarah, or the board? Diana, you were going to say something.
I'm just standing there waiting.
Give you applause?
She's waiting for you to pick up your instruments. When I stand in front of people, they're ready to play.
Don't expect that from me.
Yeah, last compliment. We get these rewards all, and not all of it, but we get so many awards, and it's always the library. It's always in the mix is what uplifts who we are and that quality of life, and it's just absolutely amazing, so we thank you for your service, and do not get tired.
Well, I think that even though there are people in the community that may not use the library, people still appreciate that a good library is part of a good community, and I think that's, that's why we have a lot of support here.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? We're, we're very fortunate, because we're just right across the street from the library, and Sarah and/or Kathy comes to see us every three months, brings us books, and the ladies, most of them, not, there's men, too, but we don't have too many men, but they're standing in line, but we don't even get the books unpacked before they're starting to look through the books and everything, and I've seen them come across the street with their little rolling cart and going to individual apartments to people that can't get out, and we are so grateful that they do that for our residents. It's, and it's, Sarah comes and tells us what's going on, so it's really handy because the residents can go right across the street and see a movie, or go to one of their DUI, DIY things, so. So, it's a great, it's a great facility, and, and I've had visitors in town that have walked through their gardens, and they're just gorgeous, so people should take a moment and just walk through back there, too, so we're very appreciative of the library.
As you're standing, if you can, if you can stay, the one thing I was thinking, that the library presentation was, was wonderful, and we, we can celebrate the new garden, and, you know, if you look through the pictures and, and, but what you're doing is providing people a home, so that should be very much commended.
That's what we try. We try to make it a-
Yeah, so we probably, maybe we didn't congratulate you enough on what you do.
Well-
You're providing homes for people that may not have an opportunity to have a home.
We've-
Thank you for that.
We've taken, we've, we've taken a few people off the street.
Gardens and, and, and stuff. Maybe you do.
We do. We have, we have, we have-
The pictures and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we have raised garden plots in the back that are full of tomatoes, and the church has raised gardens that they allow our residents to walk, walk across and get stuff. We've been very fortunate this year that my maintenance supervisor's mother takes care of some of the gardens up at Nashua, the extension service gardens up there, so twice a week, she's been bringing us boxes and boxes of fresh vegetables that we put out, and within half a day, they're gone. Nothing goes to waste, so we're, we're thankful to the community that also brings us these things, so.
David speaks on behalf of the council. That point, thank you. We have monthly financials to approve for August. Any comments? Officially received staff comments?
I know some staff do have a few comments. I know Carla, in particular, has a couple of things she'd like to cover, sir.
I wanted to bring up, for those that have been impacted for having utilities shut off due to the recent rising water that we've had, Waverly Utilities, I believe, is starting to turn everything back on. Maybe they're done already. For those of you with Mid-American Gas, if it's still turned off, the city has been in contact with them, and you should just be able to call Mid-American, and they've already got restore orders ready to go for your address, so please give customer service a call, and you should be able to get going. If you've had your appliances underwater, you will need to have them inspected by a plumber. The only time you have to have the Bremer County people inspected is if you've replaced your appliances with a new one after a flood. And also, I got, I received a call from Intercog this afternoon. If anyone is in need of funding assistance for rent, clothes, pretty much anything, say their car was in the street and the flood, flood covered it up, or whatever, you would just need to call the Decorah office, and they will help those in need, and there are income thresholds to that, but they will be there to help you if you need it. The number is five six three three eight two eight four three six. Red Cross Shelter has closed. However, there are cleanup kits, and they are available here at City Hall in the Community Development Office. We are open from eight to four thirty, so I think that about does it.
I think we're fine then, sir.
The, the, could I ask the city engineer to please, there was a billboard outside of Joe's Nighthawk, if I may, this isn't advertising, but could, could you, for the public, reiterate what was on that billboard? It was very interesting. He was trying to say, "I'm tired. I've been working nonstop for all these days. I don't have the energy to speak." Would you be able to share that billboard?
I think I'll have to go check it out after the council meeting, so. I think it, he was making comment that sandbags are two bucks apiece, sump pumps two hundred dollars apiece, and Waverly's inflatable dam is priceless.
Hey. That's too good. This is Waverly recapping a tough three or four days, and, but exciting days of everybody taking care of everybody. More staff comments?
I think we're okay for now, sir. Thank you.
Okay, then we will proceed with council comments. This side, Edie or David?
I, I just want to say, you know, thanks to everybody for what we have been going through the last several days, both the good and the bad. I mean, it seems like city staff, citizens in general, certainly students, both high school and college students, we all, you know, I think pulled together and did a lot of supporting of one another, and, and I'm thankful for that, and it makes me proud of Waverly. I think also, the Oktoberfest was a very nice respite for many, and also, they felt that they were very sensitive to what was going on. Still had signup sheets for people to volunteer to help, and I think tried to balance that as, as best they could, and I, I, I also want to thank them for organizing what was really a very nice event. I hope going forward, we will continue this because it's not over. There are still people who are cleaning things up, who are not yet in their homes, who can still use help from, from all of us, and so, I would just say, let's not forget that and continue the good work that we've been doing as a community, and help our neighbors and friends and strangers in the community for that matter, so that's, I just want to say thanks mostly to, to everybody.
Well spoken. Thank you. Pro tip. Mike?
Oh, nothing.
Echoing some of Edie's comments, I think, again, the community showed its true colors again with the effort that they put into helping each other, and the city staff, again, managed through a very, sometimes, information is, is hard to get at or control to get the right information out, and I appreciate their efforts to do that, and Edie says, we just need to remember that we're just through phase one. Now comes the cleanup, and hopefully, folks will jump into that, and, side note, the process did give the city an opportunity to put the new emergency operations center through kind of a, a test. Thankfully, it wasn't a real high-stress tornado-type event, but that facility seemed to work very well, so it's a good asset to have in the community also, that if we need to go into emergency operations, we've got a place that'll support that outside of the flood zone, and.
Matthew?
Just wanted to say thank you for letting me be part of this. Really haven't been involved in city government before, and it's a, it's a completely different perspective when you're sitting up here around the, the half circle. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Really good to have you. Yeah, I think we're going to do a more, we'll do a recap, is it next week, on, on the flood?
Right, sir.
Because, like Councilman said, we, we, we have more to go, and we can't forget anybody who has a need here, because we had a lot of movement up to, from basements up to first floor, and including mine. I think we have a little help coming in tomorrow, but we'll be talking more about the wonderful role that Workburg College played, and the wonderful role that KWAY played in being the central command for all these volunteers, and how fast and how wonderful it worked, but I'm going to save that, because we still have a long way to go, but to echo Councilman's comments on Oktoberfest with Rich here, we just need to say, my goodness, what wonderful timing to be able to, of course, I was without gas for two days, and I ate every meal at the Oktoberfest, so thank you very much, and, but it was also a chance to, what is our heritage? Our heritage is our, our goodness as a people, and so, you could see our goodness in all the volunteerism that was taking place everywhere, both spontaneously and that which was coordinated a little more, and then, we got a chance to celebrate our goodness, and that's what a party is, which our heritage is, and one last comment. In sixth grade, I was called out of school to a sandbag for the old Hemingway House, which is down next to Davy Smith and right at the end of our street and First Street, and I was, remember to this day the thrill of being able to really be part of a community, caring for a community, helping a community, and then, I could feel that same vibes in our sandbagging, and so, when I was celebrating Oktoberfest, I was celebrating, and I think we all were in our unconscious, our subconscious, that we were really part of this goodness of who we are as, as a people, but again, more formal next week. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor with yes?
Yes.
Adjourned.